Take it from me, a dog is fine. Dogs become problematic. I have to, and I wouldn't. Yeah. I'm gonna take my 15 rounds here. Do the top seed.
Um, I've lived in Henry the last 15 years, so I'm really sorry. I hate the tension of the government.
It is now nine o'clock, and I ask that you would please join me in the invocation, and then if you will stand for the pledge of allegiance afterwards. Heavenly Father, we just come this day thanking you for this day that you have made, and we choose to rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you as you continue to give us wisdom and guidance in all that we do so that we will continue to serve your people throughout this county. We just thank you again as you will precede us in these proceedings today, and ask that you bless the staff as well for all that they are gonna present and all that they're doing. And we ask this, and all in Jesus' name, and all that are agreed, please say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners is now hereby called to order. Are there any changes or revisions to the agenda that was published? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or revisions? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimously is approved for the agenda. Today is a public hearing for the 2018-2019 millage rate, and the purpose of this public meeting is that by law, if the governing bodies contemplate an increase in property taxes, three public hearings are to be held to allow public input. Meeting number one and meeting number two were held on July 24th, and this morning's meeting is designated as meeting number three. We will have the public hearing portion for citizen input and then move towards the adoption of the millage immediately following. This now constitutes a public hearing. I will now call upon our county manager, Sherri Hobson Matthews, and staff forward to give our presentation, and then afterwards, each citizen wishing to speak will be allowed up to three minutes for each public comment. I now yield the floor to the county manager at this time.
Good morning, chair and board members.
Good morning.
As Chair Wood has indicated, this is the final public hearing as required by law for the setting of our millage rate. If the board will recall, on July 24th, we did have the first of three public hearings. We had one at 9:00 a.m. on the 24th, and then we had our evening meeting on the 24th to go over what staff is proposing based on our projected revenues and based on our projected tax collections. During the meeting on last week, there were questions raised that we were going to follow back up with the board on. So before I get into the final resolution and to answer any questions that the board may have, I do again want to afford our tax commissioner an opportunity to come up and go through, for those that are here this morning and that may be tuning in, to discuss what the dollar means in terms of our collections. And then followed by our tax commissioner, I'll have our chief appraiser, John Self, come up because he had some specific questions directed to him in terms of our tax collections. So that will be presented as well. And then I'll just come back after that. Thank you.
Good morning. A lot of questions, we get down to tax commissioner's office, is where does my tax dollar go? Commissioner Wilson and I met with a gentleman yesterday. He sort of had some concerns about the road and what have you. But as you can see from this dollar bill chart, the county school tax is 50 cents of every dollar. That's the M and O. The county gets that to run their M and O. They also get about 8% for the school bond. So 58% of every dollar goes to the school system. Roughly a nickel goes to the water authority. I get a lot of phone calls about this one. This is a two-mill water bond. Most of the phone calls we get about this one, they tell me, well, I've got a well water. Why am I paying two mills my property tax? This is for the infrastructure of Henry County Water Authority. I'm not sure how long it's been on the books, probably since the 70s. But then you've got the county portion, which is 37 cents of every dollar. And as we'll see in a few minutes, the bulk of that money goes to public safety. Goes to these policemen we have here at the door, firefighters, things like that. The senior services and those, they get a very small portion of that, which I'll go over, but the county doesn't get that much revenue to run all the services and bring the quality of life that these citizens have. They get very little money out of each tax dollar collected. So I just want to bring that up. It may seem like a lot of money when we start throwing the cumulative amount around, but in the end, 37 cents of every dollar is not a whole lot of money to provide these services. Any questions?
Are there any questions from the board? Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll now invite our chief appraiser, Mr. Self, up to go over the next slide.
Good morning.
Good morning.
These are the fair market value numbers that were provided or given to the tax commissioner for the 2018 digest. Again, these are gross fair market value numbers. Were there specific questions relating to the?
Yeah, I posed that question at the last public hearing. I just wanted to see the breakdown of our tax digest so that we could at least see, you know, again, where the revenue streams are coming from that funds our tax digest, and definitely wanting to highlight that of what the residential brought in, the commercial and the industrial. So I appreciate, again, having all categories being presented today.
Sure. So, yeah, residential is roughly 13 billion fair market value. The commercial is about 4 billion fair market value. The industrial, industrial, excuse me, is 7 billion fair market value. The exemptions are not reflected in these numbers, obviously. These are gross numbers.
Okay, and I was actually looking for the percentage too, because my little calculator's not working too well up here. So if you look at the residential, that is a percentage. We can definitely calculate that, but do you have that, those offhand?
In terms of a percentage of growth?
Yeah, of the growth. I mean, I can calculate it easily, but my calculator...
I don't have the percentage of growth. I do not.
Okay, all right, very good. But we can definitely see the breakdown. Okay, very good. Any other questions, Commissioner Holmes?
Can you look at other counties such as the Cab, Gwinnett, and Fulton? Do you see more revenue coming in from commercial versus our residential? Because it seems to be a little flip-flop here.
We really don't compare county to county. I've obviously been in those counties, but I couldn't form an opinion from it.
I would like to see what those numbers look like in the future.
From the other counties?
Yeah, because as you know, every dollar a resident pays, we pay $3 to provide services, and it's opposite for businesses. So just trying to see how we can shift that ratio around by attracting more type industries to Henry County that will help reduce the tax burden on the residents.
Sure, I can reach out to them and probably get something for you on that.
Okay, no other questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much.
Again, the presentation this morning is the exact same presentation that was presented to the board on Monday of last week. As another follow-up, I do want to kind of skip through a couple of slides because Commissioner Clemmons did have a request in terms of making sure that we showed a comparison of the millage rate. So I will get to that slide. Again, what staff is proposing this morning in order for us to set the millage rate based on the budget that we've adopted is a proposed millage rate of 12.733. If you'll see to the immediate left, we did include that in 2017, the adopted millage rate was 12.733. So we are keeping the millage rate at the current rate as proposed from, or adopted from last year. I think it's important for the board and for the public to understand, because I know a lot of questions were raised in terms of what impact will this have on my property taxes? And I want to be very clear in that if the value of your home did not go up and your value went down, then you will actually see where you will pay less. So this 12.733, while it is certainly a property tax increase, you will only see that increase if the value of your home went up. So I thought that was important to highlight for the board as well. Again, I think some other questions that have come up in terms of where is my, not only where the dollar goes, but what different departments are receiving funding. I do recall during the last meeting, there were some questions raised in terms of public safety, and so I did want to make the board aware of what percentage of our millage rate does go to public safety, but also to make you all aware that there have been substantial increases when we adopted our FY '19 budget for public safety. So I wanted the board to be aware of that as well. So again, not to read the entire slide, but you will see that we have all of the different services that are listed to the left, and then what percentage of the budget is impacted by the millage rate. Again, you'll see public safety is at about 53.72% of the budget, equating to about 6.84 Again, this morning, we are here to present to the board a proposed millage rate of 12.733, and this is being done so that we can certainly move forward with our budget, which was approved by the board in May. I will now turn it back over to Chair Wood, who can open it up for the public hearing.
Okay, before we begin the public hearing, are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
Sheriff, you mentioned a significant increase in public. Can you break that down, what type of increases we had?
I will, I can certainly provide to you all the increase, more specifically in our fire department. If you will recall, the board did approve for us to proceed with the SAFER grant, which was gonna add additional staffing to our fire department. So that was about an $875,000 increase. Now, of that $875,000, only 627 was for the SAFER grant, and so that would have been one allocation. I do know that our budget director has run some numbers, so I may have to defer to her in terms of specifics if you want to know for police, but I did have the fire department readily available. So let me ask Angie if she can come forward.
I was just telling Brad, the increase also is the pension, the GEP Core Pension. We went from 8.8% to 13.1%. So that is a huge increase over last year. Also, in the fire department, you have an increase of the fireman's cancer policy. And the police department, and sheriff, and the fire department, we had an increase of the public safety certification that we budgeted and allocated for '19. It has to go into '19's budget. So that was primarily the increases. And for the sheriff's department, we had some maintenance contracts that were increased over the last fiscal year.
Other questions from the board? Commissioner Clemmons?
I have a concern about the $5 million for the classification study that we have in the budget. I would like for you to talk to me a little bit about the implementation plan of how you plan to distribute that 5 million. I know we'll have the classification study to come in, but just, I'm concerned about the accountability of $5 million being out there and who would have the authority to just distribute those funds. The classification study is a request, so I'm really concerned about that $5 million that's out there in your implementation plan.
Okay, very good question. We actually are showing a proposed amount of $4 million for the class and compensation study. What we're going to do is, we know that there's been a lot of questions pertaining to what that study will look like, who's going to be compensated, and so we have scheduled, or we're looking to schedule a meeting with the board, and it's certainly open to the public as well, a workshop to go over the class and compensation study. What we are hoping to do is bring it to you all for discussion on August 21st, or during a workshop session on August 21st, and then bring it back to the board for final approval in September. What it will do is to outline to you all what steps were taken to develop the actual study. Now, what we don't have, and I think there's been a lot of questions raised in terms of who's getting what, we do not have a list at this point in terms of individual employees with their names allocated on what those increases will look like. What's most important is that what we focused on was reducing the classifications that were similar. So if we had job titles that had three or four different names, we actually went through and consolidated a number of those positions. And then the bigger part was looking to make sure that those positions were classified correctly. Once the study has been completed and once we bring it to the board for consideration, you all will see that the job titles will change and the pay grades will change. What you will not see is a list of what employees are getting what, because it's strictly based on the classification of those positions. And so what will happen is we will bring to the board a listing of all of the classifications, what the new pay grades should be like, and what those increases will look like, and then that will be adopted by the board, and then we will begin the implementation process. So you all will be fully aware of what that total number will look like, and then you'll also know which positions will be changing in terms of the salaries.
Okay, so we need to make sure that there's some type of accountability of, request of a presentation to the board before anything is done with that, and that will make me feel a little bit more comfortable about that in the budget.
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, we're looking to try to get something scheduled for August the 21st, and what we would like to do is have the consultant here to go through how we were able to classify positions, how the pay grades are currently classified. Keep in mind, we had over about 350 job titles within our organization. For 1,600 employees, that's a lot of job titles. And what we've been able to determine is that the pay grades were certainly not in line with those of maybe some of our surrounding communities, and so that's what we've been working towards. It's taken a lot longer than we've expected, but we certainly wanted to make sure that we accounted for everything. One thing that I told the board is that I wanted to make sure that even beyond the classification, that we did also look at years of service for employees, because many, many years ago, titles were created for individuals. And what we're finding is that we have so many duplicated titles where you have one person or two people doing the exact same job, but their classifications are totally different. So that is one thing that we're trying to make sure that when we bring it to the board, we have a clean list, and we have job titles that are consistent with the job functions. So that will come to the board for approval.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes, then I'll go.
Sheriff, the $4 million is set aside for 50% of the employees that are getting the increases?
No, sir. The $4 million is set aside to reset the entire county. It may be 85% of the employees. It may be 90% of the employees. It's not tied to a percentage of employees. What we're wanting to do is similar to what we did for public safety when we did the reset. What I don't want to do is bring to the board a number that will only take care of one group of employees. And so what this will do, we are hoping that the $4 million will get everyone classified and then the correct pay grade for all employees. Now, keep in mind, there are some positions in which those employees may already be above where they should be, based on the chart, the minimum, the target, and the max. We do have employees that are well beyond what, where they should be based on their job classification. Now, that could be because many, many years ago, we did have longevity raises, we had COLAs, we had increases that were across the board in which those employees were entitled to. So there may be a small percentage of employees that may not see anything, but that is strictly because they've already capped out. Now, that's where the years of service will come into play, in that those employees may not see anything based on the class and compensation, but based on their years of service, they may see an increase after a certain number of years.
So is public safety also included in the 4 million?
Yes, sir. Public safety is also included in the 4 million.
So what about employees that don't shake out in the classification study? Will they go this year without an increase?
Tell me what you mean, shake out.
Well, that, you know, don't qualify for an increase in the classification study. What happens to them?
Well...
Are they just left behind, or what?
No, sir. And that's one of the reasons that we've included the years of service as an element of the class and compensation study. So take, for example, you may have an employee that may be a clerk typist that may already be above the maximum for that position, but may have 15 years of service. And so what we're looking at is what the minimum salary would be for that position, and it's similar to what we did for our public safety, and I'll have to take it from Commissioner Prince, is the up and over model, where we look at the employee, where the pay grade, where they're currently listed within the pay grade, and then we look at their years of service. So they may not see anything this year, but if they're still employed the following year, there is a strong possibility that they could see an increase, and that is something that we would have to budget for. And so that's one of the things that we're working towards.
Maybe this is a question for Angie, but what did we allocate last year for increases for all employees?
We did a 2%, 2% increase across the board for all employees.
And that was how much in the budget?
Give me one second. And while Angie's getting that number, the 2% across the board raise also included the public safety certification, so that was also in addition to. Angie's gonna get the specific number, but it's about 2 points something, so she'll get that, and we'll certainly come back to that.
Okay, yeah, I think it's also important why, if we can educate the audience as to why this is significant regarding salary and compensation study and benefits to employees, as our county manager, what are you hearing regarding our departments and why, you know, this is of significance? Because I do know that one of the biggest challenges in industry nowadays is retention and recruitment of the workforce. And if we want to continue to provide service of excellence, then this is why, I know this has been of discussion from many of us on the board. So could you elaborate on, you know, what you're hearing from your employees? I know we've had some employees that are no longer here, and, you know, we're in competition with other communities, so could you elaborate on anything in that regard?
Yes, absolutely. And I think you've said two of the, two buzzwords, recruitment and retention is really, really big for not only our government, but we are competing not only with larger counties, but also with some of our municipalities. What I've heard from a number of employees is there's no room for growth within the organization. If I am a development inspector here in the county, I can be a development inspector for the next 20 years, and there's nowhere for me to grow. And so that's one of the reasons that we looked at creating or developing this class and compensation study so that we can provide growth, where you can move from a development inspector 1 to a development inspector 2, or from a police officer 1 to a police officer 2. Now, with that comes some requirements. It's not just a given, and we want to make sure that we are, one, attracting the right professional pool, but we also want to make sure that we are affording some opportunities for individuals to grow within the organization. It's important for us all to understand that within our organization, we have a number of employees that have been here for 15, 20-plus years, and they're committed to being here within Henry County. But what they've said is, I've got to have some room to grow. I may not want to be in a director position, but I do want to be in a position where if there's an opportunity for me to move from an equipment operator 1 to an equipment operator 2, I can move from that position, and there's gonna be some compensation with it. One thing that we don't do as a county that a number of jurisdictions do is they do offer incentive pay when you do pass a certain certification. So those are some of the things that, in the past, we haven't been able to afford. We have a number of jurisdictions that actually offer tuition reimbursement that we haven't been able to offer, and so this is just step one of many other steps that we need to look towards. I will tell you that it's hard finding individuals to come in, especially when we're looking for engineers. We have been challenged with getting engineers here within our organization because we cannot compete with the private sector, and we cannot compete with some of our surrounding jurisdictions. A number of engineers, and certainly Commissioner Prince may be able to shed a little more light on it, and engineers straight out of college, they're in the six figures. They're making over $100,000. And again, that's $100,000 with no in-the-field experience, and so that's what we're competing with. So one of the things that we really want to strive is that we do provide growth opportunities in the organization, and that you're not just stuck in a position. I'll tell you also promotions within our organization. I've heard from a number of employees that there's really no incentive to be promoted out of a just basic position into a position of leadership, because there is no incentive there. If I go into a role from just being a planner to a director, I get a 5% increase, and you take on additional responsibilities. And so one of the things that we really, really pushed hard when we were developing this class and compensation study was a performance analysis questionnaire so that the consultants could really see what does this job include? When you're a director of planning and zoning, what certifications do you need to have? What should your background be? Should there be a certain level of expectation for the role? And so those are some of the things that we're looking towards. I think it's also important, because I know we're discussing the millage, but it's also important for us to discuss how we got to this point, because when we adopted our budget in May, there were a number of items that we could not ignore, and if Stephanie would turn on the overhead for me, I want to go over one quick slide.
Sheriff, right now, I'm concerned about the employees that are making 20, 30 thousand dollars, so if you can roll out that number to the board, that'd be great.
So you're wanting to...
Last year, what did we budget for increases last year across the board?
She must have gone to get the number, so give me a second. I'll certainly get that.
Okay, just a moment. Okay, so, okay, but I just wanted to make sure, did you have another question, Commissioner? Okay, so that's the number. Okay, Commissioner Clemmons?
Sheriff, you touched on a lot of things that I was concerned about, and I know that we do a lot on years of service, and a lot of people move up based on years of service. And the reason that we can't compete is because we don't look at expertise, qualification, and education. And there are people with master's degrees who may not have been here long, who has the expertise and the qualifications, that are making less than someone who's been here because they kept going up because of years of service. That doesn't make us an excellent quality county when we just harp on years of service. But if we have those incentives in place, that if you've been here, then we should help those employees who've been committed to this county get the education and qualifications to move up. I think that it really, we lose these people, and I know that we've lost, I can name five people that we've lost over the last two years, who had high education and expertise, and they went to other communities, private sector, because we did not value their expertise and their education. So we just need to make sure, I don't know what's in the classification study, but I would really like to make sure that the board is informed about what's going on with that, and making sure that we're in tune with that.
Absolutely, and I think it's also important to note, even beyond the years of service and the educational component, is the performance, because that's something that we have lacked as an organization. We have a number of employees that have been here for 15, 20 years that have never had a performance evaluation, and those are the employees that may have a master's degree that they've never been told, this is what you're expected to do, and this is what you've got to do in your job. And so for the last year and a half, that's what we've spent a lot of time on, making sure that we have set some expectations so that individuals understand what their roles should be. I will tell you, my office and the manager's office, we open the door for our employees. We believe and value their opinions, and a lot of times you will hear me say to our employees, don't come to me with a problem, come with a solution, because you're the expert, you're the professional, you have the training to go out and do what needs to be done. But I think you're absolutely right, right, in terms of, we can't just focus... But I think you're absolutely right, right, in terms of, we can't just focus on years of service. The only reason years of service is important is because I knew that it was important for us to try to at least, um, get more than half of our workforce something, when we did our class and compensation study. So that's just one element of what this class and compensation study will look like. But I will tell you, going forward, um, performance will be tied to it. Now I know there's questions raised, well, I don't want to tie it to performance, because what if the department head doesn't like me, and they're gonna give me a low rating, and I won't get an increase? Well, I've got to figure out where those problems are, because we shouldn't have department heads that are basing performance based on whether you say good morning or whether you like me. It's based on the performance of that employee. But at the end of the day, the department head also has to set some expectations of what they're expecting from those employees. And so while we certainly, um, respect any individual based on their level of service or, or based on their level of education, we also have to consider those that may not have a master's degree or bachelor's degree that are out there, that you have to have a certain certification to go out and pave a road, or to go out and do an inspection. And those employees, I'll tell you, I've had individuals tell me, it's not hard passing the professional engineer's exam, being, having a PE. Um, we have employees that want to move from an equipment operator two to an equipment operator three, but they have to have their CDL, and there's certain certifications that they have to, to pass. And so those are things that, again, we're working towards. I'll also tell you that one of the things that we've tried to do over the course of the last year, is to bring those resources to our employees. Um, our deputy county manager has been in conversation with some of our technical schools that are here in the community, that can help train our laborers, and train those individuals who may want to obtain their CDL, but they don't have the resources to do it, or they don't have the time to do it. So we're looking for partnerships, where we can partner with Mercer, with Southern Crescent, and with those different institutions, to bring those services to our employees, so that we can grow them. We want our employees to be able to grow within our organization. So Angie is telling me, Commissioner Holmes, that the increase was about one point seven, one million, seven thirty-seven, four eighty-two.
Wasn't, wasn't there a separate amount for, uh, public safety as well?
Public safety was five hundred thousand.
All right.
Yes, sir. So the total amount, let, let me reread this, I'm sorry, two point two million, and then the five hundred thousand dollars was for certification.
I'm Commissioner Wilson.
Are we looking at the starting salaries all the way across the board with this comp study as well?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Starting salaries are gonna be involved in this as well, from, from a DOT all the way up to the county manager's office? Is everybody gonna be looking at, is everybody gonna be looked at for starting salaries?
Well, let me start at the top. The county manager, myself, and our deputy county manager is not included in the class and compensation study. So there is no increase for the county manager, because I work for the board, so my salary is set by you, all, and any increases would be set by the board. Now, for all employees, absolutely. That was the whole purpose of the class and compensation study, was to evaluate all of the salaries for all of the positions within our organization, to determine if we have those positions, one, classified correctly, and if the starting, which we call the minimum pay for those employees or for those salaries, were consistent, not only with the private sector, but also with some of our comparable, um, counties, um, within Georgia.
Yeah, 'cause as I look at the county website, I see all these, uh, positions that are available. And we have anywhere from equipment operators to PD to firefighters, on up to deputies and that type of thing, so all those are gonna be addressed as well?
Yes, sir. And, and again, I think it's important to go back to, we do have a number of positions available, and a lot of it is because our starting salaries for some positions are not comparable to our partners, our surrounding jurisdictions. Um, I will tell you, there are some municipalities within our own county, that their starting salaries for positions are much higher than our starting salaries. And so those are the things that we've had to compete with, and I'm hoping that with this class and compensation study, it will get us in line with some of the surrounding jurisdictions that we're, we're competing with. Now, I can't tell you that we're gonna be able to compete with bigger counties, but I can tell you that we've looked at those bigger counties, and that we are certainly wanting to make sure that we have, again, the professional level staff, but also a staff that we can compensate for their level of, level of education and level of service.
So if you increase the starting salaries, that's gonna cause a, a compression? So is that gonna be fixed with this as well?
Well, that's one of the reasons the years of service is part of this class and compensation study. When the initial draft report came from the consultant, it did identify, again, the classifications and what the current pay grades, or what the recommended pay grades would look like. In reviewing that information, some of the questions we raised were, if we have an employee that's been here for seven years, looking at where they should be currently today, it would be in line with an employee who has been on the job less than a year. And so that's one of the reasons, or another reason, why we added the years of service, so that we would not have those compression issues. Now, I can't tell you that it's a perfect document, but I can certainly tell you that it's something that I don't feel like we'll have issues with employees that have been here for fifteen years, versus an employee that's been here for less than a year, or maybe a year.
Other questions from the board? Okay, any other thoughts?
No, that's all that I have for now.
You had a slide?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Stephanie. Um, just wanted, and again, I think it's important, um, to put this slide up, because a number of the questions that you all are raising ties back to the budget that we approved, and I think it's important for the board to understand, that within our nineteen budget, these are the items that we had to include in our budget. So when you look at the impact that we've had on our budget, we increased it by about six million dollars, but we had items that we, we didn't have any other way around, not funding those items. So I just wanted to put this back on the overhead, to just remind the board of some of the things that we had to include in our FY nineteen budget.
Other questions or comments from the board? Okay, well, thank you. Well, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we would like to invite any citizen wishing to speak on this matter to come forward. Um, each individual will have up to three minutes, um, to speak, and if you would please state your name and address for the record, we would appreciate that. So at this time, we're calling for anyone wishing to speak on this matter to come forward.
My name's Don Huntress, I'm a resident of District Three in Henry County, Georgia, McDonough.
Good morning.
And, uh, I, um, I've been sitting back, listening to the things that the county must have, the county needs, the county will not survive without. My question and comment to the board is, what are families that are already struggling supposed to do in order to meet your needs? They'll be unable to meet their own needs. Let's see, we had a slide up there, twenty-five percent rainy day fund, or reserve fund, whatever. You know, most folks don't have five hundred dollars in a checking account, or a savings account, if the transmission on their car blew up, or their motor blew up. I'd like for the board to consider the citizens for once, and let the government, um, kind of tighten the belt, instead of having everything that they need. Our citizens are what make government, and I would just suggest that there's, uh, some that are up for reelection, and in two years, the remainder will be up for reelection. And I, I do believe that you folks think we've got a short memory, we don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for public comment? Good morning.
I'm Catherine Pilatsky, I live at thirteen Emory Street in Hampton, in Commissioner Clemens' district. Um, I live in the unincorporated city of Hampton, where the millage rate increase is estimated at twenty-seven oh six, for a house that's valued at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Twenty-seven dollars is the cost of one hardback book. I pulled this off my bookshelf at random, walking out the door this morning, checked the price on the inside after I got here, twenty-seven dollars even. That's the amount of the tax increase, property tax increase, for the area where I live. For the cost of one hardback book, I have a county that provides services for everyone in the county, not just me. This book doesn't do anybody any good, except for me, for pleasure reading. But for that twenty-seven dollars, I get a library system that gives me three hundred thousand print volumes, and that's just in Henry County. Plus a wealth of digital resources, plus our membership in the Pines Consortium, which puts that access point at about nine point six million items that I have access to, just for paying my property taxes. Now, I've heard people saying, well, the poorer, the poorer people, the lower-income people, you know, can't afford this, but a millage rate, while the amount, while the percentage is across the board, the amount is not. It's already scaled so that people in lower-income areas are paying less, and that the people who have more are paying more. And even the Bible says, from whom, to whom much is given, much is required. And this is a situation where that tax doll, those tax dollars, go to the good of the whole community. This is not about what the county needs, this is not for you, the county is providing services to me. My house has never been on fire, but I'm really happy to have a fire department that's well-staffed and well-trained. And I'm just here to say, not just as your library director, but as a private citizen, a property owner, a homeowner in Henry County, that I'm willing to pay my share. We don't have to wonder what would happen if we don't fund public services. All we have to do is turn our eyes to the South, to Bibb County. They are in the same debate right now, except that they have already decided not to fund affiliate services. Three of the four public libraries in Bibb County are closed right now, they've been closed since July one. Washington Memorial Library in Macon is operating on its reserves, and when the reserves run out, Washington Memorial closes. And unless the commissioners take the long view about what's best for the community, instead of the short view of what might get them reelected, Bibb County is going to have no public libraries. Probably mid-August, that library will have to close. And it's made the national news, and that's not the kind of national news that you want to make. There's, the, their citizens are outraged, and, and we can see what would happen, and I'm just encouraging you to take the long view, and to fund the services that the, that the people need.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for public comment?
Mercedes Barker, two seven five Hillview Road, um, I'm in an unincorporated Hampton area, uh, unincorporated portion of, uh, Henry County, on the south side of Hampton. I'm in District, I think two is where I'm at. We own three acres and a, and a home, and it may seem like a really nice area and stuff, but, um, every year, I could only look back on the last couple of years, our property value, yes, the millage rate hasn't gone up, but our property value has gone up that two point three percent, and if not more, because they, they're increasing the property value, so you take more of my money. There is a, a reality that just because the millage rate doesn't go up, you've gotta stop the other end of it. I agree that things have to be funded. Every year come January first, my husband and I sit down, we look over our bills of the previous year, we look at how much money is coming into our house, and we say, the money is what the money is. And the, then the bills get distributed out. My husband had to ask for an increase in pay this year, to be able to come up with our property tax money, that I was, I've been saving up for all year long, and, uh, you know, how much more? I agree with the gentleman that spoke in the beginning, how much more are we gonna continue to ask people to keep on taking out? We could begin fasting at our house, so that we can afford to pay our property taxes. I'm short this year already, uh, four hundred dollars for my, uh, auto insurance that comes due in December. I don't have the money for it. So, you know, it, it ends up having to come from somewhere. I'm asking the county to think carefully. Um, let me see, you guys said that there were, last year, they asked for a two percent increase across the board in, um, salary increases? According to this study that you guys are gonna do, it's looking like it would be another one point eight percent increase? My husband, other than this increase that he asked for this year to pay for our property taxes, didn't have an increase in his pay in thirteen years. I don't have a, a bit of sympathy about, yes, when we have firemen and police officers, we should pay them what they're worth. You know that up on the, upfront. If it means we have to slow down growth in Henry County, because we can't afford to have more police officers, then stop building houses. I mean, come on. I see them coming up down the street from my house, someone might say, well, you know, you can sell your house and leave the county, I can't get my, what, what you're saying, my house is worth, I can't get it for it, because they put up new houses down the street, comparable houses that are worth the same amount of money. I think there's something that has to be done here, and it's on the spending side, and thinking about it very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning, Board of Commissioners, Clayton Cart, one five zero three South Bethany Road, uh, Commission District One, Mr. Wilson. I, I support this board in keeping the millage rate at twelve point seven three three, uh, you know, and I also support this board in going forward, splitting public safety into a special service district. I think many residents would be surprised to learn that over half of this county's budget is public safety. In the past year, we have opened three new fire stations, and that required a good six to seven million in additional operating expenditure. But for those areas of the county, Llewella, Mount Carmel, and Kellytown, homeowners in those areas have, now have a significant boost in their fire protection, and a reduction in their homeowner's insurance. These public safety investments are necessary and supported, and I, I just ask citizens to remember that most of your tax money goes to the school board, and over half of what you give to the Board of Commissioners goes to public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Calling again, anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing none, this now concludes our public hearing, and we invite our county manager back up, please. So at this time, board, um, are there any questions or comments, um, especially as it relates to the presentation that was been, that was made, and any comments that were made from our public? Okay, hearing none, we'll ask the county manager to present the resolution to adopt the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen millage rate.
Um, board, you should have, um, either in front of you, or I can place on the overhead a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners levying and assessing the ad valorem taxes for fiscal year twenty nineteen. Um, I will tell you that there are several wheresthues in the resolution, and I won't read the entire resolution unless it is, um, the will of the board, but again, I do want to, for the record, just read into the following. The total ad valorem tax levies are thirty-eight point three six one mils for the unincorporated areas of the county, thirty-eight point three six one mils for the city of Stockbridge, forty point oh one two, which includes four point zero eight three mils for city tax mils for the city of McDonough, thirty-six point five four nine for the city of Hampton, and thirty-six point five four nine mils for the city of Locust Grove. This resolution does authorize the chairman of the Board of Commissioners to sign all necessary and related documents for submittal to the Georgia Department of Revenue. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that the board may have pertaining to the resolution.
Yes, I would like if you read item five, that speaks about the purposes and the services by which are provided from the county for these, um, revenues?
Yes, ma'am. So for general county public purposes, as authorized by law in the Constitution of Georgia, as amended, sixteen point one five three mils, or sixteen dollars and one point one five three per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. From this amount is further deducted three point four two zero mils, or three point four two zero per thousand of assessed valuation, through the collections of twenty-two million four hundred and forty thou, twenty-two billion four hundred and forty thousand two hundred and thirty, and local option sales tax for fiscal year twenty eighteen, to a net Board of Commissioners millage of twelve point seven three three mils, or twelve point seven three three per thousand of assessed valuation for the unincorporated areas. All property located within the city of McDonough will be assessed at the ten point three oh one mils, or ten point three oh one per thousand of assessed valuation. All property located within the city of Stockbridge will be assessed twelve point seven three three mils, or twelve point seven three three per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. All property located within the city of Hampton will be assessed ten point nine two one mils, or ten point nine two one per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. And then all property located within the city of Locust Grove will be assessed ten point nine two one mils, or ten point nine two one per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. The cities of McDonough- The cities of McDonough, Stockbridge, Hampton, and Locust Grove receive the same rollback of three point four two zero mils for local option sales tax, also referred to as lost, as in the unincorporated areas. And rollbacks and/or credits due to the combination of services are as follows. The city of McDonough, minus two point four three two mils. Of that, one point eight one two is for police, point six two zero is for fire. Hampton, one point eight one two mils. Of that, one point eight one two is for police. And for Locust Grove, one point eight one two, same being, one point eight one two, police.
Okay, I was looking for item five, counted lists the purposes of the millage rate. That's item, I'm not sure if you've got the same copy I have, but that's the one that lists all of the services by which the millage rate supports, is what I was asking for.
You are correct. So, I do apologize. That these millage rates are for the purposes of providing the following. Police and fire protection and emergency communication, recycling center, senior services and transit services, public health facilities and services, including the mental health activities, county health department, emergency medical services, indigent healthcare, and animal control, street and road construction and maintenance, stormwater collection and disposal systems, parks, recreation areas, programs and facilities, community development, planning and zoning, supportive library activities, building code enforcement and inspections, general administration of county government, courts administration and operations, the maintenance and supportive prisoners, and the handling of litigation affecting the county, supportive agricultural and home demonstration agents and programs, and then finally, supportive public assistance programs as may be provided by law.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the Board? Hearing none, we call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Calling again, we have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, we don't have a motion, a second, so the motion dies. So we now call for a substitute motion. All right, I look at our county attorney, so we don't have a motion to deny as well, so.
That's all that's on your agenda.
Okay. So given that, will you give us a clarification of our true status at this point?
You don't have a millage rate, so you, you have to, you have to adopt a millage rate in order to collect property taxes. If you don't adopt one, then you won't be collecting any property taxes.
Okay, so hearing that we do not and have not adopted a millage rate, we now call for a motion to, to see our county manager, you've got any comments?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to talk to our tax commissioner in terms of deadlines.
Okay.
Revenue's come to the office three o'clock Friday afternoon to approve our digest. We've got to have a millage rate approved by then. I believe this Board, we've had our three public hearings, so we don't need to advertise any further hearings. But this Board does need to come with to some resolution of what millage rates you need to operate. So we have a little time. We don't need to do it this morning, I don't, I don't suppose, but we do need to do it fairly quickly. We've, we've exhausted as much of our window as we possibly can, minus the next two or three days, so.
Okay, well, and, so I would like to just, again, open the floor for questions from this Board. Or is there any other information that you need to accept or deny this motion? Hearing none, go ahead.
I, I think it's important for us to, certainly, and, and I know we've been in this position before in terms of setting the millage rate. I would like to remind the Board that we did adopt a budget in May, and the budget adoption included setting the millage rate at the twelve point seven three three. As Patrick has indicated, by not setting the millage rate, we, we certainly cannot collect on our tax collections, because we don't know what the rate is going to be. So at this time, I'll need to hear from the Board in terms of what other questions may be out there, or what, what the issues are, because I have no direction in terms of how to bring back to you all a proposal if I don't hear back from the Board in terms of what next steps are.
Specifically how the four million dollars will be allocated across the, across the county.
Okay, that, that information, the class and compensation information will not be available to the Board until August the 21st. I don't have that information readily available.
The last time I asked a question, I was told fifty percent of the employees will receive increases. Today is up to eighty-five, could be a hundred, so there's too much fluctuation in there for me, and I need specifics, or I can't vote for the millage.
Any other comments, Commissioner Holmes?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens, and then I'll make a comment as well.
Sure, I would be comfortable with the budget if the four million dollars wasn't in there at this time. I have to listen to what the citizen's saying. Everybody's having issues, and I'm, I'm just not comfortable with having that in there right now.
Well, let me, let me see if I can clarify. The four million dollars is just one of the line items that would be considered because of the increase in the tax collections. Please recall that when we adopted the budget, at that time, we had no idea what the class and compensation number was going to look like. I, I think for, for management and for our team, we're trying to be proactive rather than having to come back to you all in two months saying, "We need an additional three million dollars or four million dollars to fund said study." I think when we were having our individual meetings to discuss the budget, one of the things we talked about is what the bottom-line number would be for our class and compensation study. And I think at that time, I told you all about three point five million, but it could probably go as high as seven or eight million dollars. Now, when I was first asked about the class and compensation study, I again said that we were still in the, not the preliminary, but we had received the initial draft proposal. And at that time, I wasn't comfortable in saying who all would get an increase, because I don't have that information. All I have is positions and what those pay grades will look like. At the end of the day, if, if the heartache is the four million dollars, then we don't fund the class and compensation study. That, that's what the Board approved. We, we approved a resolution to have a class and compensation study completed, and that's what we're working towards. But we've got to be able to fund it. We can't do a study and not fund it, because I think that's what we committed to our employees, that we would do the class and compensation so that we could fund it. What I've heard from the Board is that we want to get the right people in here, and the only way that we can get the right people on board is to have a class and compensation plan. We, we've got to do that. There, there is no way around it. So the four million dollars is certainly one of the items that we can consider. But if that's something that the Board wants us to take off, I can certainly take it off. But I wanted you all to understand that we do have an increase in our tax collections of about six point three million dollars. And to fund the class and comp study, we could offset it with those collections. But if that's not the will of the Board, we can certainly remove that from the, from the slide, but the six point three million dollar increase doesn't go away. That is a fact. We will have an increase of six point three million dollars.
All right, Commissioner Clemens, and then I want to speak.
Sure, I want to be clear that I'm not saying I'm not committed to funding the classification study. I want to be, I want to make that clear. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying to put the four million dollars in there right now and not have the information that we need about how it's going to be spent is a concern of mine. Number two, if we take it out of this budget right now, the four million dollars doesn't go away. It doesn't fly off into the county somewhere. The money is still there.
But the four million dollars is not in the budget. It is not in the budget that was approved in May.
If you don't approve the millage rate, you won't have the four million dollars.
Right.
We're trying to approve it, just take that line item out.
Well, if you take that line item out of...
It's not a line item.
If you take that slide and just delete class and comp study, you'll have a four million dollar surplus in your budget, but the millage rate remains the same. You're not approving four million dollars for the class and comp study. You've already adopted your budget. You're not, you're not budgeting today. You're funding today.
But there is not a four million dollar surplus in your budget.
Back when you adopted your budget, today, you adopted what money's being spent already. You're not approving any expenditures today. All you're approving is how you're going to fund that percentage of your budget that isn't funded by fees, or fines, or grants, or such as that, so. Right, I understood, understood.
And let me also say, just point of clarification, the, the class and compensation study and the four million dollars, nothing can be done with that until this Board approves it. This is not a blanket, if, this is just for you all in the public to see that we do have an increase in our tax collections. That, that's, and I don't want that to be a secret. I want to be very transparent with this Board, that we are going to be collecting more in our tax collections based on new businesses that may be here, based on the additional residential homes. And our values have gone up in some cases. Everybody's values haven't gone up, so they may not have an increase. And so what we're trying to do is to be proactive, and instead of coming back to the Board to do a budget amendment mid-year to say, "Hey, oh, by the way, we have a tax appeal that's two point three million dollars, and oh, by the way, we have the class and compensation study." These are two big-ticket items that we know that we've heard from the Board are priorities. Well, at least the class and compensation study. I'm, I'm not sure in terms of the tax appeal, because that's something that we may not have any way around. So that's what that number is for. Now, we can certainly remove that from the slide, but I do want this Board to understand that whatever's decided in the class and compensation study, that will come back to the Board for approval.
You're making it sound as if the class compensation study costs four million dollars. That money's actually for salaries.
That is correct. The, the class and compensation study, the cost to do the study is already in the budget. Two boards ago approved that, and so that is already in the human resources budget. So it's not four million dollars to do the study. We are projecting that it will be four million dollars worth of increases in terms of reclassifying the positions within our organization. So that is correct.
All right, well, I, I would like to make a statement. It is clear that what we're speaking about is a millage rate that is set, or is recommended at twelve point seven three three, which is the same as it has been. We do understand that property values and other values in this county has increased. Therefore, you apply that rate to those property values. You experience what we're speaking about. We do understand, as we talk about infrastructure, we talk about roads, we talk about public safety, we talk about other things that are critical to this, to this county. It is important that if we don't have the workforce that is competitive and feel good about coming to work and serving our community, therefore, serving the citizens, I tell you, the services that are listed are going to be jeopardized. Those are the questions that we're dealing with on today. We've got to maintain, again, the quality of life here in this county. We are growing, and yes, it would be great if we can just plug it, but it is not that easy. We are in one of the fastest-growing communities, and therefore, services are increasing. We're in competition for talent, and if we want to provide the excellent service to you, we've got to do what is important to, again, be fair to those that are serving our citizens. Now, I will tell you that what we are dealing with right now, this salary and classification study has been of discussion in previous years. I've seen it as a citizen, I've watched it. And this is the first time, I believe, that the Board has moved forward to say, "Let's be fair to our, our employees at all levels, public safety and other employees as well." And this is what this salary and classification study does. They are holding the two point five percent, or whatever increase there would have been given, to the employees, because this is the beginning of what can you do to balance and equalize and make sure that our employees are fairly compensated and that they are here to want to stay and to serve us in the future. Again, this is going to be, this whole salary and classification study is a beginning. I think it's going to be a continuous something that is going to have to be analyzed and continuously reviewed. Now, how do we, again, I look forward to the day when we can even talk about rolling back the millage rate. But again, that is why you've got to have strategic plans that are going to help develop economic development, and you develop a quality community, but you also have got to provide the services that our citizens are definitely entitled to. So I would just say, Commissioner Wilson, if you want to go back and make a motion, I will second it. I don't normally second motions as a Chair, but this is something that we've got to move forward with. Again, I will tell you that as we continue to get out of the dark ages into the 21st century, we're going to have to make some tough decisions. We're not going to have all the answers, but we've got to continue to operate on the information that we do have. So given that, is there any other questions or comments from the Board? Commissioner Holmes?
Chairwoman, I don't think the four million dollars for salaries is the issue. The issue is how that four million dollars is going to be allocated across the county. Last week, I heard fifty percent of the employees were going to receive the four million dollars. Today, we don't, not, today it's eighty-five to ninety-five percent. So to approve four million dollars is approving a blank check that can be distributed any way the county will pleases. And I, I just don't agree. I can't vote for it.
And I, I appreciate your comment, and, and the comment that I also heard is that there's going to be a dedicated workshop to review the details of the salary and classification study. We've already heard from a Commissioner that in that workshop, we've got to talk about not just the amount, but the funding of how it's going to be implemented and how we're going to hold each other accountable. If we don't approve a millage rate today, we're not going to have anything to start with. And that's, again, the position that I have. Again, we all are entitled to a vote, and that's what we will be able to do if there is a motion, so. That's my clarification on the four million dollars.
The study was approved, what, one or two years ago? And we knew we were coming up to this point.
Correct.
So, you know, we should have had all of that stuff taken care of before we got to the budget period, and also, this, this meeting. All this stuff should have been taken care of. We, you don't approve four million dollars and say, "Hey, we'll make a decision later on who gets, who gets what." That doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay, and let me comment regarding the class and compensation study. If this Board will recall, we kicked the study off last year. And unfortunately, we can't do a class and compensation study in two months, three months, and it was a lot longer than we have expected the class and compensation study to take. What I want to get away from, and one thing that I've pushed our staff to get away from, is who the individual is that's receiving the increase. Because at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we have positions classified correctly. I'll be perfectly honest with the Board. The reason we're in the position that we're in now is because we were creating job titles for individuals. And so one of the things that we've worked towards is making sure that we have titles classified correctly based on qualifications, based on what the job entails, and based on what it takes to do the job. And so, yes, it's taken a little bit longer, but I think the Board can, can agree or disagree with me that we've been very transparent in terms of making this Board aware of where we are in the class and compensation study. When we were discussing our budget, we had some three-on-three meetings with all of the Board members to discuss our budget, to talk about what we thought that number was going to be. And unfortunately, it's not being done in-house. We have a consultant that's been hired to do the study, and we're pushing the consultant to get it done. Again, if the fear is there's a blanket number out there, we can certainly take it out just for presentation purposes. But at the end of the day, I'm not going to not bring to this Board an approval to adopt our class and compensation study and what that number looks like. Now, again, Commissioner Holmes, I know you mentioned that last week it may have been fifty percent or eighty-five percent, but what I always tell this Board, when you all ask me questions that I may not know the answer to, I will say, "I'm not sure what that number's going to look like. It could be fifty, it could be sixty." So if you feel like I'm throwing out numbers, that's not the intent. The intent is to make sure that we have a class and compensation study that is fair and equitable, and that we have a quantifiable, quantifiable way of defending it. I don't want to just go in and say, "Because this person has two years of education, they're going to get a two thousand dollar increase, and because this person has three years, they're going to get a three." That's not how the study was done. No, sir, the study is not complete. We have a conference call with our consultant on tomorrow. It's about, and I probably said that the study's about eighty-five or ninety percent complete.
The study was completed
No, sir.
a few months ago. So, so, I mean, that brings up another concern. How do we come up with four million dollars if the study isn't completed?
Well, what we asked the consultant for was to give us the lowest number versus what the highest number could look like. And if you all will recall, when we were discussing our budget conversations, I said, and I think our deputy county manager said to each and every one of you all who participated in the three-on-three budget meetings, that we're thinking our class and compensation could be as low as three point five, or as high as about seven point five or eight million dollars, but we didn't know at that time. And I wanted to keep that conversation going, because what I didn't want to do is to throw a number in the budget, and it's kind of like what we're talking about right now. The four million dollars, I didn't put it in the budget, because I don't know what that number's going to be. And so I think I would have done a disservice by saying, "When you all adopted your budget, oh, I think the class and compensation number's going to be four million dollars." At that point, I didn't know, which is why it's not in the current budget. The only thing I wanted the Board... The only thing I wanted the board to be aware of is that we did have an increase in our tax collections. And because we have an increase, I have a mechanism that I can present to the board to fund our class and compensation study. If the board does not want to use that tax increase collection amount of $6.3 million to fund the class and compensation study, then I'll go back to the table, and I'll figure out what other options are out there for revenue sources.
So maybe a better solution is to go across the board with the increases and then come back next year and approve the classification study then?
No, sir. I think a lot of effort has been put into developing... We have to have a class and compensation study approved. And so let me say this. This board can approve the class and compensation study, and if you're saying fund it next year, if that's the will of the board, we can certainly fund it next year. But the class and compensation study will come to this board in September for some action, either to approve it and not fund it, or to approve it and fund it at a certain amount. But again, we committed, and I'm going to say "we" because I was part of that group that recommended to this board when we brought the resolution, we committed to do a class and compensation study so that we can compensate our employees for their value. I mean, we've had employees here for 15 or 20 years that they haven't seen an increase except for the 2% across the board. And it's, you know, as a resident, as the county manager, and as an employee, we are citizens here as well, and so when we talk about our millage rate increasing and what impact that's going to have, we're not exempt from those impacts. We, as employees, have the same bills that have to be paid. Keep in mind, this year, the board did take on an increase in our health insurance, but 25% of that was passed on to our employees who may be making $20,000 that still have to figure out, "How am I going to take on that increase in my health insurance?" So again, we, as a county government, have to provide a level of service. Our employees have to have the resources to do that. When you open three fire stations, you can't open them and not have people in them working. When you open a senior center, you've got to have people there to work. And so we're listening to the public. When they're saying, "Hey, I want my ISO rating to go down," then we're opening fire stations. When our seniors are saying, "I don't want to have to travel across the county to get to a rec center or to a senior center," we're listening, we're providing those services. But I will tell you, with services comes money. You've got to have the operation to run those services, and so that's what we've tried to do. And I'll tell you, our staff did a great job this year because they were challenged with, "Don't come and ask for any increases." They were given the exact same budget number as they were given last year. And that was hard, because our county is continuing to grow. So I'm telling my building department, my planning department, my DOT department, "We realize that we're adding additional residents to our county, but you're going to have the exact same budget that you had last year." And we did that because we knew that we had a class and compensation study coming on board. We knew that we wanted to make sure that we were able to retain the talent of employees that we have. We're losing employees, not because we're not a good county government to work for, or not because our morale is bad, or not because we're in a bad culture. We're losing employees because we can't compensate them. That's why we're losing employees. We do exit interviews with employees, and not one employee, and you may have a few, let me step back. You may have a few that will come and say, "I just don't like working for my boss," and that's fine, that's fine. But for the most part, employees that are resigning in the last sentence of their resignation letter, "Henry County has done me well, but I want to grow, I want to make more money." So that's what I'm hearing from our employees. But again, if the board wants to in September adopt the class and compensation plan with no funding, that can certainly be the board's decision, although that's not something that I would be recommending.
This is where I am. I will vote for an across-the-board increase for all the employees, but I will not vote for a blank check of four million dollars.
Okay, so that would be it, Commissioner, I can hear you clearly on the latter part.
I will vote for an across-the-board increase of four million dollars for everybody, but I'm not voting for a blank check of four million dollars. We don't know, we don't know how that money's going to be allocated and who that money's going to be allocated to. That's right.
Commissioner Wilson?
We're here to see how the four million dollars is going to be spent. I think we can solve that in two or three months down the road. We can approve the four million dollars on what y'all present us. We can approve it or disapprove it at that point.
But keep in mind, the board is not approving four million dollars today. That is not what this presentation is for.
But if I remember back, years ago, we've done class comp studies in this county, and it's set idle. They never funded that. So if we keep doing that...
If I could, Mr. Wilson, the board has already approved the four million dollars. You've already bud, already in your budget, in your fund balance, you...
No, the board has not approved the four million dollars for the class and compensation study.
There's, you don't, you didn't fund, well, then you're going to have to amend the budget to increase by four million dollars.
Which means, and good point, it's got to come back to the board to approve. We did not put the four million dollars in the budget because I don't know what the number is going to be, and I'm not going to present to this board just throwing out, saying, "Hey, go ahead and adopt the budget, and here's the four million dollars." So we didn't restrict it, it's not there. The four million dollars is not included in the FY '19 budget that was approved.
Okay, we need to take a timeout, because there is definitely a level of confusion on many behalf. We spent most of the time dialoguing about the salary and classification study, and I think what I'm hearing, at least from this board, is that we definitely want to do what is fair and right to our, to the employees that serve as our citizens. But what is obviously a little bit of confusion is what is this board approving today? And again, I just ask that we clarify exactly what it is that this board is approving, because apparently seems to be some level of confusion at some. But if we could just, again, clarify that today, we're here to address the millage rate, and I'm going to look to our tax commissioner to help me walk through this. We are, it is being proposed today that that millage rate remains at 12.733.
Correct.
And basically, the 12.733 will generate $87 billion, $87.8 or so billion in tax collections. What has been presented by the county manager is that that revenue that will be generated will fund the services that you've covered. If you go back to the slide that you had that showed the, go back further, that this, these are the services or the departments that would receive that, the millage rate, okay? Revenue. And in that millage rate, we see the allocation by department. Again, getting back to how the millage rate will be allocated. So, and this is related to the budget that has already been approved. So the millage rate difference that we're now going to see in revenue collections, we're saying is going to be an additional $6 billion or so. And right now, that money is being proposed to be used for tax appeals and some level to compensate our employees to remain competitive and marketable, for retention and recruitment. And what we've heard from this board, basically, is how will that four million dollars be allocated? And many are saying, "Okay, well, I don't know what the salary and classification study is because it has not yet been adopted." There has been some that says, "Let's just give across-the-board percentage increase." But basically, all we're saying today is, here is the millage rate, regardless of how that allocation is going to be allocated to salary increases or not, and that that is to be determined when we have the workshop. Is that a correct summary?
Yes, ma'am.
So again, the millage rate is, you know, so the question that is for this board, are we going to accept the 12.733 proposed millage rate? Or are we going to actually roll it back to some level? Or not approve it at all, and then therefore, there is no funding for the services that we've spoken about? So I'll just ask, is that a clarification, a good summary of what is being proposed? And if there is any additional gaps that need to be filled in, please do it.
Yes, ma'am, that was very eloquent. You said it far better than I could, but you're absolutely right. We are here to decide what the millage rate should be. 12.733 has been suggested. Without a vote, we will not be able to send out tax bills, receive revenue. And we do have a, as the county manager said, increase in tax collections. We have an excellent tax collection rate at the tax commissioner's office, we're over 99%. With the increase in values, the county will see slightly over $6 million in increase in revenue. I do think, it does sound like we're sort of getting off in the weeds a little bit about the comp study, and I understand everybody wants to be clear about what they're voting for, but I believe the time for that discussion may be in September, when all the information is presented. Right now, I just need to know if we're going to pass a 12.733 millage rate. With that, we'll fund the services, and we'll get you the $6 million extra for the tax appeals, and we'll go a long way toward the comp study.
Thank you, and I did say $6 billion, I meant $6 million, so thank you for the clarification. Okay, given that, are there any questions or comments from this board? Okay, hearing none, we're going to now open the floor for a motion again.
My motion to approve.
Is there a second? I will second that motion. Any further questions or comments? All in favor to adopt the millage rate as proposed, please signal by raising your hand. We have three. All that are against the proposed millage rate, please raise your hand. All right, the motion fails. Again, we do not have a millage rate to approve. So I will just, I don't know, again, on what we need to do to move forward to...
Move on.
Okay.
That's all there is to discuss today.
Okay, all right. Given that, we'll call for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn...
Second.
...in a second. All in favor, any opposed? Thank you.